To call the November 5th, 2025 regular school board meeting to order. Invocation by Ms. Tina Nocamp, District 3, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather together this evening to faithfully serve you and our school district. Allow your holy wisdom to be upon us and guide us to make decisions according to your will. Watch over all employees and students and bless them in this league for their unwavering dedication to our parish. We ask all of this in your holy name.
Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, the equal and representative states of the nation, one nation, without borders, united as one with the citizens of our world.
Roll call.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Dr. Giat?
Here.
Ms. Babbitt?
Here.
Ms. Petita?
Here.
Ms. DuPlantis?
Here.
Ms. Bouzoua?
Here.
Mr. LaFon?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Shroemchick? You have a call.
Thank you, sir. Item E, LaFouche Education Foundation. And tonight, we're really excited to have Dr. Mary Bro and Ms. Dana Groh, who is the Executive Director of LaFouche Education Foundation. Welcome, ladies, and I think you'll like the presentation.
Thank you. Yes, we also have an opening ceremony. Over with is Ms. Stacy Sherman, who is also the treasurer. So, Ms. Bro has given you a little handout, just kind of highlighting some of the things that LEF has done and is doing for LaFouche Parish School District this school year. Of course, the mission is to support LaFouche Parish public schools and supporting teachers and encouraging grants for innovative teaching. So this school year, 22 teacher grants have been awarded totaling $50,368.62. Those people have been notified already. They will be receiving their checks in the next couple of weeks, and it is upon them to purchase what they said their grant was for and then send us the receipt. So 50 grand worth of grants going out in the next couple of weeks. There was also 17 new teacher grants totaling $4,250. No new teacher was turned down for a grant this year. There was a budget set for it. Apparently, we didn't have that many new teachers in our district this year, and those funds are being spent locally. They have a choice between Colay Office Supply and Kim Supply. And those are actually delivered to them at their school by those particular companies. $3,600 was spent on teacher wish lists. Teachers could submit their wish list to LEF, and from there, there was a certain amount that was set to purchase from anybody who submitted. Of course, they also do the celebration of excellence, where every teacher who gets Teacher of the Year gets $100. The parish winners get $500 plus a nice backpack, and LEF covers the reception. This past year, a grant was written to Bayou Community Foundation. We were awarded $15,000. That $15,000 plus some LEF money was put together and given to 11 different Title I schools, materials that they asked for. They had to ask for materials to support their ELA teachers and their math teachers, and that came to $17,359.49. Two of those schools did not respond, so they were not awarded. LEF also funds the Dolly Portman Imagination Library for LaFouche Parish. So all of the children in LaFouche Parish who are enrolled in Dolly Portman Imagination Library receive a book once a month from birth to five years old. Those books cost $2.67 a piece mailed home. We are fortunate that the state does have a grant that matches, and right now, we have 1,393 children enrolled. That's 9,875 books that have been mailed out to LaFouche Parish children since January. And that cost $26,366.25. So these are all the things that are being done for LaFouche Parish children and LaFouche Parish schools. So definitely a great thing happening. I know when teachers get these grants, they get all excited and they can't wait to put things into action. I've seen some teachers in my school already do things for their students. And when my teacher received it last year, it benefited every child in the school because we had the sky dome come in, the planetarium. On the back are all of our board members and a little bit about King Cake Fest, which funds all of the things we do on the front. So you also have received what the donation categories are and sponsorships are. Any support is greatly appreciated because this is what keeps the organization running. Ms. Marion is also on our board. So thank you, Ms. Marion, for your continued work with it as well. Any questions?
So you're thinking about the fundraiser, the main fundraiser.
Yes, the donations. We are not quite where we want to be yet this year. As of right now, we have $60,000 committed to us in sponsorships. I believe last year, we were at 110,000. So we are still working to try because, again, the monies, the profits from King Cake Fest are what funds besides grants, as you know, we got the Bayou Community Foundation grant 15,000. But it does. It is what makes the grants possible.
I have to say that I read the grants this year.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I don't know if I was supposed to say that or not, but they have some very innovative teachers out there. So it was a pleasure to read that they wanted to do so much in their classrooms. So thank you.
It is. It's nice. And we have a couple principals in here, too, who were recipients of the materials, the ELA and math materials, who were telling me how much the teachers enjoyed the things that they had asked for. So any questions? Thank you for having us. Thank you for supporting us. Yes, sir. Another sponsor right here.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. For all of those who are here, if you haven't attended the King Cake Festival, you are missing a great opportunity to enjoy great king cake and fellowship and really support our students and teachers and staff. Please portage.
It is January 31st in downtown Thibodeau. Regular admission is $10. There are VIP entrances as well for $100, and you get a special seating area and access to food and drinks a little bit easier than the rest. So your support would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bro.
Moving on. Item 2, awards and recognitions. LaFouche Parish School District students, staff, and group recognition. Ms. Bolton.
Welcome. Tonight's awards recognition ceremony is one of the highlights of the year because we have the opportunity to recognize the students who are exemplifying the very best of what our district has to offer. These students that we're recognizing tonight have excelled not just in the classroom, but they've shown leadership, character, service to their school and their community. So it's an honor to be able to recognize them for their contributions, not just to the school and not just to the community. So we are going to get started. As we call your name, you'll come up and receive your award, and then you'll turn real quick toward me, and I'll take a picture, and then we'll have these up for you tomorrow, where you'll be able to see them on our Facebook page. And so we are going to get started with our Elementary Students of the Year, and Ms. Anne Hotson is going to call out those names. And just give me one second while I move this back out of the way. Okay, we're going to announce all of the elementary school winners, and then we'll let middle school and high school announce all of their winners, and then we'll come back and name our parish winner for elementary schools. We'll have a little drumroll and a certification there for our big winner. So from Bayou Blue Upper, we have Morgan France. I'm going to take a couple. From Bayou Buck Elementary, Owen Chauvin. From Bayou Community Academy, Piper Colley. From Sam Washington, Jade Smith. From Check Bay Elementary, Spencer Westerman. From Cut Off Elementary, Celine Bro. From Galliano Elementary, Annie Lacona. From Golden Meadow Elementary, Natalie Doucet. From Lockport Upper Elementary, Luke Bouzoua. From North LaRose Elementary, Charlotte Landrum. From Racine Upper Elementary, Van Jane Chasson. From South LaRose Elementary, Bennett Gaujour. From St. Charles Elementary, Rowan Claymore. We will now move on to our Middle School Students of the Year. From Bayou Blue Middle School, Summer Day. From Bayou Community Academy, Owen Bro. From Golden Meadow Middle School, Allison Guidry. From LaRose Cut Off Middle School, Charlie Coleman. From Lockport Middle School, Jackson Arnold. Racine Middle School, Anna Robert. Sixth Ward Middle School, Hannah Elizabeth Waitecup. Seven O Middle School, Brandon Jones, Jr. We will now move on to our High School Students of the Year. From Central LaFouche High School, Madeline Fosso. From South LaFouche High School, Nathan Dean, and he is unable to join us tonight. From LMBA State University Championship. And also from Thibodeau High School, Colin Murillo. Okay, now the moment you've all been waiting for, at least those of you in the elementary room, right? All righty. So just so you know, and I know you've all heard this, if you're here, you're a winner, clearly, okay? It takes a lot of hard work to be sitting where you are tonight. You know, the portfolios come into the office, and I want to make everybody a winner, you know? So that's not possible. So I have a committee of people who get together, and they look through your rubrics, get through your portfolios, and they score them. And so this is how we get our winner from the elementary schools. We have several people look at these. So this year's elementary winner is, thank you, Mr. Lou Bouzoua.
There we go. There we go.
All right. Okay, just down a little bit so I can see your smile. All right. Perfect. Yes, it's like that. And now it's time to announce our Middle School LaFouche Parish Student of the Year. Jackson Arnold. And our High School LaFouche Parish Student of the Year is Madeline Fosso.
Well, I'm going to really let Ms. Hotson open with, you know, in the fifth, eighth, and 12th grade, it's about 1,000 kids in each of those grade levels. And so when you boil that down to the few kids that are here, it speaks to how well you're doing at school. It speaks to your accomplishments, and all of you here tonight should be tremendously proud to represent your school at this student of the year, and I can't wait for those folks that are going to be representing LaFouche Parish at the next level. So congratulations, parents. Thank you for what you do, supporting them in their journey. I am not foolish enough to think that they did this on their own, absent any help from you. We know that you're making all this possible. So thank you for trusting us with your kids, first and foremost, and kids, have a great night. I do think the restaurants are open tonight, so you probably have earned the right for that. If you guys want to stay, you're welcome to. Otherwise, thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you, kids. Congratulations.
Item A, approval of minutes and observances and proclamations today. Minutes of the regular school board meeting held October 1st, 2025. So the motion, Mr. Henry LeFond, who's second, is there any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? If not, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 4, memorial resolutions. Aide, Ms. Patricia Harris, retired guidance counselor. Ms. Patricia Harris was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on August 17, 1990, as a teacher at South Thibodeau Elementary School. She also taught at Racine Upper Elementary and Racine Middle School before leaving the system for a short time in September, 1999. Ms. Harris returned to LaFouche Parish on August 17, 2020, as a guidance counselor. She served at South Thibodeau Elementary and the pass site at East Thibodeau Middle School until her retirement on August 3, 2012. Ms. Harris served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 22.50 years. B, Ms. Peggy Dewey. That would be Ms. Sharpton James.
Ms. Peggy Dewey was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District as a school secretary, bookkeeper for the 1962-1963 school year. Ms. Dewey left the district in July of 1969, but returned on July 1, 1972. She served as the bookkeeper for Golden Meadow Upper Elementary, Golden Meadow Middle School, and assistant as a part-time custodian at Golden Meadow Up Elementary. Ms. Dewey retired on June 22, 2022, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 30 years. On a personal note, I knew Ms. Peggy, I knew her husband, John, and you will find really great people.
C, Ms. Benita Loughlin, retired secretary, Ms. Bouzoua. Ms. Benita Loughlin was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on January 11, 1972, as a secretary at Racine Upper Elementary School. She retired on June 19, 1995. Ms. Loughlin served for LaFouche Parish School District for 23 and a half years. And I have to say, on a personal note, she was a good friend to my mom and my family, such a sweet lady, and it always amazed me. She had, her fingers were, I have arthritis, so they were spread out a lot, and amazed me how she could make a piano sing and type with those fingers, and so I know she will be missed by her children. Thank you. Mr. Ray Petrie, retired band director, Ms. Bouzoua. Mr. Ray Petrie was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 29, 1966, as the band director at Racine Middle School. Mr. Petrie also instructed band students at Racine Upper Elementary School. Mr. Petrie retired on June 2, 1999, having served LaFouche Parish for 33 years. I again know Mr. Petrie. In fact, he was a neighbor. He lived two houses down from us and was my band teacher. It really warmed my heart to see so many tributes to him on social media. He really had an impact on his community and the music world. So I know his two daughters and two sons will miss him here. Item A, Ms. Veronica Bednor, retired teacher, Mr. Wright.
Ms. Veronica Bednor was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September 2, 1975, as a teacher at Thibodeau High School. Bednor retired on May 29, 1992, having served LaFouche Parish for 17 years.
I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent and that a copy of the resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
There's no objections. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and that a copy will be recorded on the special page of our minute book. Item 5, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting, Wednesday, October 15, 2025, Ms. DuPlantis.
Thank you, Madam President. A, to approve the renewal of short-term and long-term disability for fiscal year 2026, New York Life with a three-year rate guarantee. So moved.
Second by Ms. Babbitt. Any comments from the public? Any board comments or questions? Hearing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
To approve the renewal of the Guardian Life Insurance for fiscal year 2026, one-year rate hold. So moved.
A motion, second by Ms. Bouzoua. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comments? Hearing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Item C, to extend the current subscription services for student data collection software through January 5, 2027, with school status in the amount of $78,925.0. So moved.
I think Mr. Wright. Any board, any public comment? Any board questions? Hearing none, please vote aye, or aye whatever.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, to approve the Microsoft license renewal from SHI International Corp. So moved.
Second, Mr. LeFond. Any public comment? Any board questions or comments? Hearing none, please vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E, to authorize advertisement for requests or proposals for digital payment solutions, which is a cashless systems for after-school events. So moved.
Motion, we have a second. Dr. Giat? Any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Please step forward and say your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Melvin. I live at 322 Cedar Tree Drive, Thibodeau, and I was unable to attend the committee meeting, so I kind of have a question. But I was wondering if this was going to be exclusive use of just a cashless payment thing at sporting events and things after school?
I can, I can entertain being there.
Thank you.
Those decisions haven't been made yet. We want to have a cashless option for sure.
Right, and most people probably would use that.
Correct. Well, what we haven't made a decision yet isn't if a person shows up to an event and only has cash. What would be the mechanism for them to transition that cash into a card that can then work with our system and/or pay with cash? But we want to limit the amount of cash our schools are handling.
Right.
The point of this is to get away from the cash because it is creating an accounting nightmare. We'll keep the nightmare, and then the logistics of having to turn that cash into the bank after these events is also a challenge.
Oh, I, yeah, I get that.
So the more closely we can get to pure cashless, the better, but we haven't arrived at detail surrounding someone from out of town who shows up and all I have is cash. Those are things we're still to learn about.
Well, can I just make you all aware, if you're not, in 2024, the Louisiana Legislature passed a bill into law that was signed by the governor that does not allow the refusal of cash at post-secondary school events. So I don't know if that will bear anything into this. I know it doesn't apply to, you know, elementary and secondary schools, but just for a point of reference there. And it is legal tender, you know? Cash is legal tender, so.
This is just for advertisement, to advertise.
Right, it's advertising for a bid, but I just, you know, wanted to say that. Thank you.
Hearing none? Oh, are we going to vote on this? I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. Okay, we had a public comment. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. I'm sorry, I cut off.
All right. Item F, to authorize advertisement for requests or proposals for a time and attended software system. So moved.
Motion, second, Ms. Wells. Motion second as well. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comments? Hearing none, please vote.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the audience, I just want to reiterate that we discuss all of this thoroughly at our committee meetings. And so, it may look like we're rushing through it, but we really have a really good understanding of what all of these items are. Okay, item six. Approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held October 15, 2025. Mr. LaFon.
Thank you, Madam President. Item eight, to approve a change order request and a sum credit of $216,000 to remove the scope of work for alternate number two for the Golden Meadow Middle School demolition and campus improvements project. So moved.
Motion second by Ms. Gavin. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comment? Hearing none, vote aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Item B, to approve a change order request to add 28 days due to unforeseen equipment delays to the cutoff elementary band call units project. So moved.
Motion second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board questions, discussions? Hearing none, please vote by saying, signify aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, to approve a change order request and a sum total of $6,011.15 and add 24 days to the LaFouche Parish School District Middle Multiple Locations Project. So moved.
Motion second by Ms. Bouchard. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comments, questions? Hearing none, please vote by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, to approve a three-year lease with Virtual Academy of LaFouche vow for the rental of the LaFouche Parish School District building located at 190 Johnny Duprin Drive, Raceland, Louisiana, 703 94. So moved.
Motion second by Dr., I want to call you Dr. Duflantis. Dr. Guyot. Any public comment or any board discussion, questions? It still is Dr. Guyot, not Dr. Duflantis. So, please, let's vote by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Any positions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, new business. Eight, to consider the findings of the superintendent regarding a student expulsion appeal pursuant to LaFouche Parish School Board policy, JDE. And at this time, this next item on the agenda is to review the expulsion of a student pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute, Ordinarily, this sort of proceeding is done in executive session, which is closed to the public. But the parent has requested that the board review the superintendent's decision to expel the student be conducted in an open meeting. So, this item will remain open to the public. The statute, which defines the school board member's role in the expulsion process is Louisiana Revised Statute, 17416(c)(4), and it reads as follows. The parent or legal guardian of a student who has been recommended for expulsion pursuant to this section made within five days after the decision is rendered, submit a request to the city parish or other local public school board to review the findings of the superintendent or his designee at the time set by the school board. Otherwise, the decision of the superintendent shall be final. If requested as provided in this paragraph and after reviewing the findings of the superintendent or his designee, the school board may affirm, modify, or reverse the action previously taken. The parent or legal guardian of the student shall have such right of review even if the recommendation for expulsion is reduced to a suspension. Each school board's code of conduct shall include information detailing the appeal process provided in this paragraph and subparagraph 5A of this subsection. The parent has made a timely request for review under this provision of the statute. The attorney representing the student has made a request that what is called on the law, de novo hearing. What the attorney is asking is that we conduct another hearing, not simply review the transcript of the hearing and the evidence presented at the hearing and made a part of the expulsion hearing record. He asks that the matter be presented to the board de novo, which would mean the witnesses would testify again and evidence presented again independent of the hearing record. Our practice as a board, when reviewing the determination of the superintendent, is to receive a copy of the transcript and the physical evidence introduced at the expulsion hearing. And then each of us reads and studies the record in advance. Counsel for the student is asking you to deviate from that practice. I have requested from our attorney to provide guidance as to whether we must grant this request for de novo hearing. And he advises that it is not mandated in law to provide a de novo hearing. He advises that this is not mandated in the law. He advised that there are statutes in our state's laws that are worded differently, that do provide for appeals from agency decisions that do provide for a de novo hearing. And he can certainly provide example of those. But the language of Louisiana Revised Statute, 17416(c)(4) is plainly different. He pointed out that when it is mandated for a de novo hearing, it is plainly stated in the language of the statute. I might also add that Mr. Domody provided that he has been representing the board since 1990 and that this board has consistently followed the process which you are currently, which we are currently utilizing. I also want to mention to you that should the parent be dissatisfied with the ruling of the board, there exists a right to appeal the board's ruling to the district court here in Thibodeau. This is contained in Louisiana Revised Statute, 17416(c)(5A), and it reads as follows. The parent or legal guardian of a student who has been recommended for expulsion pursuant to this section may, within 10 days, appeal to the district court or for the parish in which the student's school is located and adverse ruling of the school board in upholding the actions of the superintendent or his designee. The court may reverse or revise the ruling of the school board upon a finding that the ruling of the board was based on an absence of any relevant evidence in support thereof. The parent or legal guardian of the student shall have such right to appeal to the district court even if the recommendation for expulsion is reduced to a suspension. A few things from the portion of Section 416. The district court proceedings like ours is not a de novo hearing. The judge must decide the matter by looking at the record, which is the same process that this board has used for its last 35 years. Do I have a motion from a board member to consider a de novo hearing? Having no motion, I will deny the student's request for a de novo hearing. Mr. Como, having no motion for a de novo hearing, your request is denied. Mr. Como, you have also made a request for subpoenas to be issued. That request as well is also denied as there is no additional testimony that will be considered, nor does it appear that the statute permits this body the right to issue subpoenas. A few other matters, as I mentioned. The parent or the child has requested that this matter be open to the public, which is an unusual request, but one that we will honor. This proceeding is not an ordinary school board meeting process. It is a review of the findings of the superintendent related to the expulsion of a student. It is very similar to a court proceeding and, or more similar to an appellate court proceeding. You, as members of the public, are allowed to attend but not speak or disrupt in any way this proceeding. If you utter words or make any noise whatsoever, I will stop the proceeding and ask the person to be escorted from the proceeding by the deputy. Deputy, I ask that you monitor the attendees. And if you observe any disruption or distractions, please bring it to my attention as I sit furthest from the audience. I ask board members to do the same. We all have been to court here in Thibodeau either as a party, a witness, or a juror, or spectator. And we all know the level of decorum expected by the judges of this parish. I expect everyone to behave in the same manner. Mr. Como, you have 20 minutes to present your argument on behalf of your client. The superintendent's representative will have an opportunity to respond ordinarily once the matter has been argued for deliberates in executive session, much like a panel of judges who do so. However, you have asked for an open meeting. Mr. Como, are you requesting that the board deliberate in a public meeting? Or do you waive that so that the board may deliberate in executive session?
Public meeting, please.
The board does not vote in executive session, only discussions. Once there is no more discussion, the board returns to regular session to vote. How does your client wish for the board to deliberate? In the open or private deliberations?
Open, deliberate.
In either event, the board will vote tonight to affirm, modify, or reverse the action previously taken. Mr. Como, this is your client's appeal. Please begin. You have 20 minutes.
I'd start off by thanking you for your time to give me my 20 minutes. One of the primary issues that the courts have looked at historically in these expulsion hearings is due process. Due process and fairness. And in this proceeding, we feel that we were denied that right to due process and thus the reason we asked for y'all to hear this de novo. I understand that's been denied. But this is a situation where you should hear the facts that we were denied presentation of at the hearing with the hearing officer employed by the school board. We tried to ask questions of the principal at that hearing and by counsel for the LaFouche Parish School District, we're told to stop. We were told that we were asking inappropriate questions when we asked why she put the student on the same bus with the abuser. And by abuser, I mean the one that spread naked pictures of her through the school. The one that the principal did not believe and just discount. So, for those reasons, we were asking that this be a de novo review because we were not allowed our due process right at that expulsion hearing. We were in the process of questioning the principal, the hearing officer, and other attendance employee. Were advising the principal on what she could and couldn't answer, which, they're supposed to be neutral hearing officers, so that was confusing. And then lastly, as we were trying to ask questions, the counsel for the school board told us to stop. Mr. Ori, who was co-counsel in this, was the one asking the questions. And it was, this is not a hearing for that. This is not a hearing for that, is what we were told. This is an informal hearing. This is not court. So, we were not allowed that opportunity under due process and fairness to get all the facts out. And it was evident that in that hearing, those hearing officers were shocked to see that the little child was showing naked pictures on the bus. And this individual student, I don't understand why she was victimized at 10 o'clock in the morning. When she reported to school personnel, there are naked pictures of me going around. And by naked pictures, these are AI-generated pictures of the student's face on a nude body. And she was victimized, and you know what the principal did? She told the SRO, she said, "It's not my hands anymore." And the SRO didn't make a complaint, didn't do any formal investigation. She said, "I looked on Snapchat and didn't see the pictures." Well, no, you're not going to see the pictures. They're sent to people, not just out there in the public. And then, she tried to call her father. Because she was bullied all day because of the bush that was on this individual's face, a private part with her face on this picture. These students teased her all day. And she said, "Let me call my dad." We don't need to get parents involved right now, is what she was told. So, he didn't get a call. So, she was forced to undergo that same bullying with her naked picture running around. And then, at the end of the day, you know what that school did? Put her on the bus with the guy that showed the pictures and created them all day. And he continued to do that on the bus. He continued to show them on the bus and send them to people on the bus. And she had enough. What is she supposed to do? She's reporting it to the people who aren't supposed to protect her. But she was victimized. She was victimized. And finally, she tried to knock the phone out of his hand and swatted at him. You know what they never did in this investigation? Talk to the kid that showed the naked pictures and made them? Didn't ask him any questions. Didn't bring him to the hearing. This investigation was about, oh, you committed a battery and there is no justification for that. That cannot be the practice. We cannot afford this juvenile child to have to go through this. And then, when we try to ask questions of the principal, "Why did you put her on the bus with the abuser?" Oh, you need to stop asking those questions. That is why this fundamental right to due process was not afforded to this individual at the hearing. We didn't get that. We had witnesses in the room. Didn't even get to call them. Because we were shut down. This is a precedent that I believe y'all need to be very attentive to because this day and age, education is changing and what students can do is changing. And if they are allowed, as students, to show a picture of a naked person, AI-generated, and have no consequences of it, instead, the person whose picture is shown is the one who gets the consequences. The one who had no problems in school before. And now, she is doing poorly in a pass site. This cannot be right. There's a point where you say, you just got to have that gut feeling and it's got to sit well with you. And a girl who just had enough and swatted at a boy who didn't even move. He was like, okay, I'm going to take my little hit on the head and move on. And then, he's still at school the day we go to the expulsion hearing. I believe that there are cases that I have cited, and I know we're beyond that point, but the de novo review is honored in Caddo Parish. The Supreme Court of Louisiana said, "That's a great thing. They were afforded their due process right by being able to come to the school board and present what actually happened." But, there was no motion for that despite our request. We believe that there were, we have statements from witnesses who have come forward, who have found out about this information and how utterly disgraced they are, that this little girl who was victimized is now being victimized by the system. And they want to come forward. They want to tell you what they saw that day, but they can't. Because you don't afford an opportunity and neither did the expulsion committee. Ivy Daniels, the good kid. If you had a person who was constantly getting in fights at school, there's escalation proceedings. Your own policies say, "Start with something simple. Start with some remedial action, not jump to expulsion." This was not a random act of violence or anything. This was not a terrorism case where people get expelled. This was such a reasonable response to what this little kid endured. And there were so many options, less than expulsion, that could have been done. But, it seems like par for the course for six more. Because later, that month, a boy has beaten somebody else, another girl up on the school bus. So, maybe that's the problem. But, in this case, we have a girl who was victimized, told, "We don't believe you. You don't have the pictures." But we got the pictures now. We got the pictures now. But we can't even have a hearing on that because our due process rights were not afforded. And your recitation of the law is correct at the district court. So, what happens at the district court is, we appeal. They're going to do a review just like this, argument, no new evidence. And if they find that the due process right was not afforded, they're going to kick it back. So, now we're back here, and do y'all now kick it back? So, we are going to be months down the road with this little child having no resolution. with this little child having no resolution because she was a victim. Had she not been a victim, we're not here and none of this happens. And I'd like to give a few minutes to my co-counsel, Mr. Ori.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's going on here, I'll be quite frank, is nothing more disgusting. We spent a lot of time, 10 minutes, talking about due process. You don't even need to talk about that here. Let's talk about the bare-bones facts of what happened. You had a child, Ivy. Stand up. Where you at? Stand up. Her, that girl, her image was taken by artificial intelligence and manipulated and manufactured to be child pornography. Child pornography, sir. She went to you guys. She went to the school. She asked them for help. She was denied. She then asked to talk to her father, to call her father because she was being made fun of. She was denied. And then they thought it'd be a good idea to put her on the bus. So here's what we know. We have a kid undoubtedly whose images were taken, manipulated, and manufactured of child pornography by a student at that school. The mere allegation alone should be enough to never put them on the same bus that day. This is my business. This is what I do every single day. People are charged with crimes. Many are not guilty and many are guilty. But you know what you don't do the same day? Put them in the same room. Especially after a lack of an investigation. Do you realize what you guys are about to do? Each and every one of you has kids, and your kid comes home crying because a student took her image, manipulated that image, and made it look as if she had now pubic hair in her private area. She's getting made fun of all day. She comes to you crying. And now you gotta explain to her, "Hey, daughter, look. I'm sorry that the school, the people that are supposed to help you, did not help you. They didn't do their job. And I gotta punish them because they took action after the same videos and images are being shown on the bus again of her? You guys okay with that? What world are we living in now? How are you gonna tell that? You gonna do that with your daughter? Your daughter gets that done to her. You guys okay with that? You know what's amazing? The district attorney here, she didn't find that Ivy was a perpetrator. They declined charges. They will not. They have adamantly said they will never charge that little girl with battery. You know why? Because it's justified. She asked for help, not once, not twice. She is the victim. And now you took her out of school and suspended her? Excuse me, expelled her? And now her grades have plummeted? You took that from her. You have a chance right now to make it back. So no, I don't need due process. That alone, you have enough. It is not enough to say, "We investigated, but we really didn't." You investigated, what was that? You didn't even talk to them. You didn't find an image. I bet you didn't. It's Snapchat. It disappears. You did that one day. But you guys want that girl to be expelled from this school in her childhood, potentially robbed? Do you know what it's like every day to be made fun of? Do you know what it's like every day? This is how kids become suicidal. This, right here. And you guys are saying it's okay. So here's the message, guys. Guess what? Create all the images you want. Corner someone's reputation. Destroy them. And when they retaliate, we're gonna do nothing to that person. We're gonna expel them. We're gonna expel the victim. And you can do it again, again, again. Do you guys see what's wrong with this? I don't need due process. I need you guys. I don't care what happened with Mr. Almeny. No disrespect, Mr. Almeny, over the last 25 years. But now in 2025, things have changed. This is your chance. I know it's not the norm. I get it, right? Never in a million years are you gonna buck the recommendation. I'm asking you two now. She's already been out of school enough. Her grades have plummeted on where she's now placed and they weren't plummeted before. She is a victim. She is a victim. And ask yourself, if that happened to your daughter, or your daughter, or your daughter, how you feel? And they get expelled because they show up to school and all of a sudden, someone is disseminating pictures of her naked image? It's not her. And that's okay. Sorry, Ivy. I'm sorry you got expelled for this. So no, I'm not as friendly as Ben. I am disgusted with what happened. There was no investigation. And that is the new message. That's the new message we're sending here. Nothing I said is not factual. Could be a lot more. You don't even need it. Here's that. What you know is what I told you. Someone else created an image. She got made fun of all day. She asked for help, not once, but twice. Then they put her on the bus. The guy does it again, which they have seen. We had to give them the pictures of what was being shown. And he wouldn't stop. So what do you do? That pissant fight that you saw, and she's expelled? That girl did exactly what you're supposed to do, right? Exactly what you're supposed to do. Self-defense has evolved in this world. Now there's a cyber self-defense. So ask yourself, as you do publicly deliberating your decision, what would you do if that was your kid? What would you do? You're gonna say, "Sorry, babe. I know you worked hard. You love school. But someone else generated a picture of you and you took action because they wouldn't, and they expelled you." That's not right. I don't care what happened the last 25 years. That is not right. That is one of the biggest injustices I have ever seen in my career of what's going on right here. So what I'm asking you guys is to take action. I know it's hard. I know it may not seem like the right thing to do, but you are setting dangerous precedent by doing anything other than putting her back in school. Put her where she belongs. She didn't do anything wrong. Nothing wrong. So I respectfully ask each and every one of you to take this very seriously. And remember, put yourself in your child's shoes and ask yourself, "Is this right? Is it right?" Because it's not. Mr. Martin, I mean no disrespect to you in this whole meeting. Zero. It's not a shot at you. It's not a shot at anyone individually. It's a matter of not knowing before what you know now. That is all. I am asking that you put her back in school and reverse the expulsion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Coggs. I'm just like, listen, to give a statement for the school board investigation. And Mr. Edmonds, or Mr. Edmonds?
The administrative hearing is not the same standard as that of a formal trial. Student suffered no violation of her due process rights. Student had a fair hearing before school officials. School officials met the procedural requirements. All participants in the hearing were advised of their rights, including the Fifth Amendment. The decision to recommend expulsion was supported by the findings, and the findings were supported by the evidence. All relevant material evidence was produced or had an opportunity to be produced. All video evidence was viewed openly in the presence of all parties and counsel. The request for review of the superintendent's decision because the hearing was conducted in such a manner that all the evidence was not presented at the hearing is entirely false. This opportunity was afforded several times, and the hearing was conducted following the letter of the law as evidenced by the transcripts and recordings. Student was given every opportunity to say what she wanted to say in the hearing. Student's representatives were allowed to submit evidence. Student was charged with assault and battery of a student. Student was asked in the presence of counsel if she had struck and hit a young man. I said, "Young man," didn't want to say his name, while he was sitting in the seat of the bus. Student replied, "Yes." In the presence of counsel, the student apparently responded affirmatively when asked that they had been treated fairly at the conclusion of the hearing.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we have a discussion of the...
Let me ask questions. Mr. Cook, there was allegations that they were asking questions to the principal and they were told to stop. Did that happen?
I did not tell anyone to stop. We had counsel there, but the school board...
Did someone tell him to stop asking questions?
I have the transcript. I don't have the question. It's all in the transcript, though.
I saw that.
I think, when I... I think I didn't get the tone to stop asking questions. I think it was the, I guess, the type of questions. Yes, it was asking, I guess... I just thought they kept saying that it was more of information.
I understand.
I don't think they were able to stop, told to stop asking questions. I just thought it was the type of question they were giving presented.
We were emailing to us earlier. We had time to reiterate and send video.
We did receive this early. We've gone through it, operated.
Yeah, I've been out for a few weeks. And I was gonna talk to the student and get any questions. And the video was...
Yes, I don't think the attorneys presented the video that I've witnessed and I saw in the transcript seemed to be a bit skewed. Yes, she is a victim. I agree with that. But if she had not hit the young man, we wouldn't be here today. Wouldn't have come to an expulsion hearing.
I know I ask this every time, but what we're deciding on right now is whether you want to overturn the superintendent's decision or hold it, amend it, or dismiss it. And normally, we can't take new evidence into our decision. Is that...
This is what we use.
This is what we have to use. So everything that he just told us, we basically can't use to make our decision.
That's incorrect. There's nothing I told you that's not in that transcript.
In a different way, yeah.
Well, in the trans...
But we go by, that's what I'm saying, is we go by the transcript.
So was the pictures... Let me try to read this correctly. So the pictures was presented in the hearing? So did it have...
I have a copy of the student showing his phone on the bus. I introduced it at the hearing. If that's not in y'all's packet, y'all have been misled. It's got the naked pictures. They're thumbnails. I have the full one if you wanna see it. But they're thumbnails of the naked pictures and he is on the bus showing people. So that was introduced...
What he was saying also introduced? Those were screenshots of the video that... Did you get an opportunity to watch the video?
Yes.
The, um... The young man who was walking around on the bus showing the video, pictures of people, that was not the young man that was on it. Or got into an altercation with. That was a young man who struck that child previously and then walked around and went to each section of the bus showing everyone that this and then before everything else happened. So that was, yeah, that was admitted. That was in the video. Just a screenshot of that section blown up and returned into the package. This is just the transcript. He submitted that image. Yes, ma'am.
I feel like it's being misunderstood because is the document that I submitted at the hearing in y'all's packet? Because the document that I submitted is not the school bus camera. It is a student taking a picture on the bus and it is Connor Bourne showing the video, the picture. And I said the name, so it's okay. He is the one showing the naked images on the bus. And I introduced that. If y'all need a copy, because y'all haven't seen that. That is not something they have on a video. I want y'all to know.
So was the camera not on at that moment? That we didn't capture that, or it was on?
What he's describing was also captured by the video we watched. In a different angle than the student on it.
I'm always one that has a problem with this. And the DA is not gonna charge her. You know? I just have a problem with that. And the DA didn't think this rise is sufficient enough to have a battery charge? I just, I don't know. I guess the lawyer in me.
It's not the old lawyer, Mrs. LaFon. And she's not charging. There's a reason. It's very simple. Her images. She's the victim of a much bigger crime than that. And that, nothing happened to that person, and that's okay. We're talking about her. A picture was generated of her. She's made fun of all day. It's a naked picture. After multiple attempts, she defends herself. A picture that he has right there, that you can clearly see the kid showing once again of her in a position she was put in of the same address registered that put her on the same bus. It's not the old school lawyer. There's a reason your gut feels like that. This is unbelievable, truly. Something about what's in there, everything's in there. It's the same thing. It's very bare bones. It's not about due process. You know what it is.
I'm not introducing new evidence, but I would ask that you each take a look at this because this is what I put into evidence at the administrative hearing. And I feel like it wasn't sent to y'all. Y'all are saying, "Oh, it was in the video on the bus." That's something different. I want you to see this.
I can't wait. We have to have a...
It's not the evidence, as what we presented.
What did your, you don't know what you want to see? This is introducing new evidence?
Materializes that. It's not new evidence. It's what was introduced at the hearing.
Okay.
And you look...
I get worried of it. It's a new setup.
Thank you for that opportunity to proper picture the publisher.
Any other questions, any other clients?
Did she ask to tell her father and she didn't make a call?
We have the transcript. She was, she asked to call.
I'm trying to remember.
From what I've read in the transcript, she asked to call her father and they were not calling parents at this time. Her phone was never taken. You know, they use their phones all the time. They could have called them later. Yeah, at that time, they said they weren't ringing parents in to investigate.
So we're listening and everything's valid, but we don't have like an opposing argument to this, to be able to debate some, right? Is, so we only get like one-sided from them. We don't get, we got the statement from, no, I'm understanding. The statement from him, but like, and as far as the public goes, we're all hearing their attorneys. We're not hearing publicly, right?
Ma'am, with all due respect, you shouldn't give me any more credence because I'm an attorney or not. That is their representative. You heard from him. That's their statement.
I did, I did.
Right, so I just wanna be clear. This is not about one's an attorney and one's not. That's who made the decision. You wanna counter that? Let him counter you right now. Fire off questions at him. Ask away. Because that's the way I left the meeting as well. When you, you can't be serious. This is it? That was their response. You're not gonna get anything else. But to say they don't have a response, that's disingenuous. That is their response.
This is not the place for that. That's what I'm speaking, yeah. This, we can't, we can't, yeah. This is not, we're not allowed to get into that.
He just gave a statement. He just gave a statement.
Yes, my question. I kind of feel like, we don't hear anything from the SRO, like, that, was that, like, does the, the, the SRO have a statement as well? Was that even, like, the findings? I mean, I know that when the principal handed it to the SRO, did the SRO come out?
The principal, Ms. Babin, if I may, the principal was in the hearing, and she spoke through the fact that the student spoke to the counselor, the student spoke to the SRO, the student, the student spoke to members of her staff, and so there were many members of her staff who were aware of the allegations. Remember, in the transcript that is spoken about, Ms. Corio speaks to, there were multiple students who were reporting multiple other students having engaged in this behavior. And even on the video that you watched, there were at least, I'm afraid to put a number to it, but well over half a dozen students who were circulating these photos amongst themselves all in the back of that bus. Unfortunately, this despicable behavior had become pervasive that particular day amongst many students. Her staff was trying to arrive at the origin, and then how it got to be, and where it went from there. And I'm not going to speak to the sheriff's office part of it, only Ms. Corio and our staff's part of it.
The image was not created at the school. What it was created, I understand.
I have not been given a clear account of anyone as determining where, when, or how the image was created.
Or then say there were a couple of people from out of the parish that had done it.
I have not.
I mean, that was in the transcript, yes.
I have not been presented with any evidence to determine who, when, or how any of the images were created.
Could they happen somewhere else, and it is a law enforcement problem, not problem, but decision? And the thing that we're looking at is that it was being shown around the school by some other people.
And again, when presented to the principal, allegedly, because the student questioned, the transcript says, "I heard it was happening, and I don't know who has it or where it is right now." And so the limitations of the investigation were such that the lack of specificity and details hampered the investigation. These are always difficult things to investigate, because the right to privacy of students has to be married with, compared with, the seriousness of the allegation, and what we can do and what we cannot do. That's why we, we do partner with the sheriff's office to aid us in this investigation, and we're thankful for that. There's a lot to be regretted about the circumstances of this case, to be sure.
And the origin of the manufacturing of the image has absolutely nothing to do with this. If a kid manufactured Mohammeda's house and brought it to the school, it's, it's not an off-duty sheriff's office deal, a school deal. What we do know is the image that you saw was on a bus, it's owned by the parish.
Right, I understand that. No, I'm just saying that if it was created somewhere else and not on the school grounds, the thing that we're looking at as a board is what happened at the school, and that is passing the picture around, showing the picture, correct, on the bus.
And at school.
Look, I, I would say, when this was presented to me, Mr. Cook didn't ultimately make this decision, I did. I'm not going to pretend to this board that Mr. Cook made this decision, let him stand here alone. I concur with this decision, to be clear. Sometimes in life, we can be both victims and perpetrators. Sometimes in life, horrible things happen to us, and we get angry and we do things. The video you all watched, I don't think depicts what was described tonight. The video you all watched depicts something that is very difficult to defend.
I want to say, and you know, Mr. Martin, I respect you a lot. What keeps playing on my mind a little bit, a lot, is that what she went through all day. And then, did it reach a tipping point that afternoon, seeing the kid she thought was responsible, even though he may not have been responsible? And then getting two other guys, that bothers me, getting two other guys involved to go beat him up. That, that bothers me a lot. But I'm also trying to think, and Emma is the one at expulsion hearings that come up with, with, with these things, you know? But I, I do have a problem with her facing everything she did all day, and all of a sudden, she snaps. And, and it wasn't all of a sudden, because you could tell in the video, they were, they were planning it, she put her hair back, she, she was getting ready to think about it, and there's a lot of things in that video that I don't like. But I'm also trying to put into perspective what she went through all day. And, and, and as a young girl, and as a father, as a grandfather, I, I kind of wondered somewhat too, what, what I would do. And of course, this is open, normally, we, we get into this much, much more heated when we're in executive session, especially by me, because I seem to ask a lot of the questions in expulsions. But I think if there's ever, and, and what I don't want to condone, and what I don't want to come across, is that I'm, I'm, I don't want to condone that if you're perceived as a victim, that gives you the right to go beat up somebody. And I have a problem with that. And I, and I do, Matt and Ben, I have a problem with that. But sometimes when I think of what she went through all day, maybe, and I know we have strict rules, and that if you do this, that you're expelled. If you, if you're involved in a fight, you know, you're automatically suspended, you know? Is this a situation maybe where we look at a suspension instead of an expulsion, or we can get her back in school? Her grades are suffering in class, I don't want to see that happen. And I'm, I'm just throwing things out, guys.
I'd probably disagree with you, but you know.
I don't have any opinion here. You guys are the decisions, they're going to weigh up.
But, but I, I just, I keep on thinking, what she went through from all day that day, and then on the bus, and I do have a problem with what I saw on the bus, because it looked like it was, she was getting some guys to help her out, I have that, I have a big problem with that. But I'm also trying to put it in context of what she went through all day. I will leave you guys with this, or not sell work, put this in perspective. Put it in perspective, imagine what she's going through, and going to help multiple times, in the words of Mr. Martin, counselors, teachers, trying to call her dad, and nobody will help. Put that in perspective before you make your decision. Let that sink in. That's why we're here. I do have a problem with on the bus, fine. But when nobody else helps you, and you've gone to them for help, that is a different situation, undisputable. And severity of crimes, like one's a victim, one's not, you know, child pornography, what, what sentence is for that versus simple battery? You've got one still in school. Right? Let that sink in.
They keep saying nobody helped her. What, what kind of help?
What kind of help? When you asked to call your father, and as you're now, what I'm, I'm understanding is she's supposed to violate school policy and use her own phone. When she goes to a guidance guy, you can, you can look at me like that, that's exactly what just happened. This is what we're here.
There is no policy against students using their phones.
That's right. They have, they have safe places that they can use phones.
Okay, well, wherever the safe place was, but she went to the counselor.
That does call the school. So evidently, she, he found out some kind of way. I'm just going by the transcript.
She went to the school, she went to the guidance counselor, she reported to a teacher, sheriff's office. Nothing was done. Put her on the same bus. And now we're here expelling her.
That's what I'm seeing. What help was she looking for, just not to be put on the bus?
I don't know, someone to take the situation seriously and separate it. Just, just separate it, it's no different than looking, and I hate saying adult world, adult crime. Someone's accused of a crime. I might have a client that's accused assaulting someone. We don't know if he's innocent or not, what we don't do is put him in the same run and say, hell, cage it out. Or better yet, the same person who claims she's assaulted. And then goes to the sheriff's office, they say, no, we don't believe you. All right, let me try this route, no, we don't believe you, but let's go put him in the same room. That's the point. That's what we're saying here. That's my point of going to hell. If she doesn't do anything, doesn't say words, it's a different story. She went to every avenue possible from the people that she trusts, guys. A knock on six-door? Mr. Martin said, these things unfortunately happen, you can't predict them. I totally get that. I'm not, I can see both sides of that, but now here we are. And I try, I just had a six-month-old daughter. Somebody does that to her, wait, it's sitting here right now. Wait, pass that. It's me you're dealing with, it's not them. And it's in a wholly different manner. So I, I don't know what else, so she did exhaust every avenue possible. And unfortunately, that's where it landed, and it started again the second she got on the bus, guys, please. Expelling her? This is not just one of those things, like, this is life-changing events, man. You're just like, oh, well, I don't know if we got this one right or wrong, let's expel her. No, 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 this is a good student, she's not been a bad student. Just asking, maybe, maybe make it a suspension and let her go back. We get it, not asking for a pass. Actually, look at it both ways, and then put yourself in her shoes. Unbeknownst to her, walks into a situation, blindsided, getting made fun of all day from a, from a naked image that she didn't send anybody. Whether it was made in China, or here or there, what we know is it's shown all around the school, and on the bus, and it's her. And her emotions, her state of mind, she had to deal with that. She went for help multiple times, she didn't get it. Why? I don't know, I really don't care, it's not relevant, it just is what it is now, how we end up on a bus. So it suggests she got two guys to go and were offended, maybe. I'm more offended that she went to help multiple times and didn't get it.
The transcript also, it said that she went to the office that morning, and she was kind of joking about it. So, you know, it just, as moral support, she didn't realize it was, there were some pictures of her too.
You go in the morning, and, yeah, and then all of a sudden, it just builds all day, more pictures, and more students, and it comes, and it builds, and it builds, and it builds, and it builds. You know, I, I've been doing this for forty-six years. And, and, and look, I've represented students, I've represented faculty before this board, and before the hearing committee, before I was on the school board. And, and I know what is considered due process, and I think we do due process. And sometimes I think we have to think outside the box, you know? I came in here fully ready to, 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 to hold all this, after what I saw on the bus. And then I listened to what she went through all day. You know, and it bothers me, guys, it does.
My thing about the whole situation, I don't like that she's the one who I got to.
We don't know this. We can't know that, we can't know that, no.
This is just some hurt actions.
But we cannot. We don't know. Neither does anybody. Okay, what are the, Ms. Tina?
I have to ask a question, I'm sorry, but my thing is, is that if, if by chance we would decide to amend the decision, could we say that we amend it with, with some kind of stipulations, such as maybe we do let her go back? However, we have some kind of a probationary period, saying that, hey, if you find yourself in trouble, like, because we know that she has put her hands on someone, and I'm going to be honest with you, I'm an educator, I've been in education for many years, that makes me very uncomfortable. You, you just don't touch other people, period. If, it, would that even be an option? Because it might not be an option, but if I wouldn't ask the question, I would feel very remiss when I walked away from the table.
You have the option, Ms. Babin, to do, again, you can overturn it, you can amend it, and you can uphold it.
So as in, if we would, if we would discuss amending, we have the opportunity to put stipulations on it, is what I'm saying. Thank you for clarifying that for me. As I said, I do not, and I know we've all said this, I found the video of the bus to be sickening, like, the whole thing, everything about it. But like you said, the fact that this child went through this all day long, does weigh very heavy on me.
Any other questions, any other comments?
We know, do we know at what point she found out it was a picture of her? Because like we said, in the morning, she went with the two friends, not even knowing it was, it was her.
No, we don't, there's nowhere in the transcript that, that I found that.
What point of the day, right, is she found?
Can we get a, the present action for a school's concern with, what is the protocol for an expulsion for a student that's been placed on online learning? What, what is the timeline? What, what is in place present?
I'm not speaking to this particular case, but in general, as a student, if you were expelled from school for some non-drug-related offense, the standard procedure is an eighty-nine day expulsion, with the return to school after forty-five days, and the remaining forty-four days, because we have actually eighty-nine days, semester's not ninety, will be on a probationary basis. If you were expelled from school for eighty-nine days, you would spend forty-five days either at home, learning online, or you would be at the alternative site, learning there. And at the end of the forty-five day period, you would then return to your base school on a probationary basis. That's not necessarily what happened in this case, just speaking in general terms of what would happen for a student expelled for a non-drug-related case.
And in what are the other implications for the duration of the expulsion timeframe? Because it is, it is a year, year to the date of?
No, sir, no, sir. Most of our expulsions are actually not year to the date. Most of our expulsions are eighty-nine days, so the event happens, as an example, on September one. At the end of ninety days, your expulsion is over, in that you are no longer on probation. At the end of forty-five days, you return to your base school. In many cases, our students return back to their school in two months' time.
Any restrictions on participation in activities?
Great question. For the entirety of the eighty-nine days, as an expelled student, even when you return on probation, you're not allowed to participate in sports, go to dances, extracurricular activities. We only allowed participation with you to go to school and, and go to class. If you were a member of the football team, as an example, you, you could not do that until the expulsion term has been completed. And of course, many schools have additional things that take place, such as being expelled and you being removed from that program for that year.
So at this time, looking at this particular case, how many days are we involved?
Mr. Martin, am I allowed to? Yes, yes. So do you all have any objections to having this discussion? So, we were approaching the forty-fifth day, I believe, in about a week, is that right, Mr. Cook? The forty-fifth day has already passed, she would have been returned back to her base school, but as said by counsel, she failed to complete the work on her, at the alternative school, so the alternative school has notified her and the family that she will remain at the alternative school until the full ninety days, so she'll be able to complete the work while she is assigned to the alternative school.
She didn't meet the threshold to return in the forty-five day with probation to the eighty-nine day.
A lack of completing the work for her, yes, sir.
Had she completed the work, she would already be back.
None of that is, is the point, none of that is the point, that are the facts of this case. She didn't complete the work, because she's now in a completely different environment. She wasn't struggling before, she's struggling now because she got expelled, and I knew that's what was going to happen here. We're going to look at timelines and say, oh, look, keep it up, good, we're all good, because she can come back anyway, but not so fast. You pulled a child out of the environment that she was in. She's struggling. That's why we want to come back. But I knew that would be the outcome. And it was because of the severe depression that she had.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm sorry. The severe depression that she had, she missed when she went straight into Pats. She is doing much better now in Pats. But unfortunately, the coursework that she missed in the initial Pats environment, that she was depressed because the picture's still eating at her, that's why she was delayed. She is doing much better, grades picked up, so I, I hate for you to say, oh, well, she didn't do what she was supposed to do, so she just got stood out. That was still a huge time period when she was initially into Pats.
I have one more question, Mr. Martin. And as with all of our students' records, each year that's expunged, right? We, I mean, this would not go on her record for next year or any other year.
Just, just put records don't carry one year's.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, that this, once this school year's over, that record is expunged. That this, once this school year's over, that record is expunged. And so that will not follow her. So what is the measure of the board? Do we have a motion?
I move that the superintendent's decision be amended, that she be suspended for an amount of sixty days, and that she be on probation for the additional ninety days.
So it would actually add to the amount of time that she would be on probation. She could go back to school at this point.
At this point, she could go back to school. But I think because she's behind in her work somewhat, I think instead of forty-five days, it should be sixty. The suspension, credit for time served, as we say in law, and then that she be placed on probation till the end of the school year.
So I have to ask, while we throw the word probation around, I want to make sure that everybody's aware of what probation means. That means that she is, one strike and she goes back, correct?
And during that time of probation, is she going to go home in school or...
She goes back.
Or do they include extra activities?
Mr. Henry, forgive me. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
That's fine.
Again, apologies. What I'm hearing and what I think practically happens are two different things. If it is your intent for her to return to school immediately, as your motion, is that what you'd like to motion?
No, I think, I don't know how many days she served.
Can we get an idea of what days, where are we at in this timeline?
Rather than do that, because that would take some logistical gymnastics on airport to count days, if you would set a date for her return and then probation, or a date thereafter, like a date on the wall on calendar, that might be easier to develop.
Go ahead, Henry. Say. What number of days are we on right now?
And I just want to make sure that we also understand. The probationary period can't extend beyond the consequence. So if the consequence is X, the probationary period cannot be greater than X.
I understand. So it can't go beyond ninety days?
That is correct. So the probationary period would be some early return, because then you, the whole point of the probation is to finish out the original sentence. Again, education, not criminal.
What does a suspension look like? Is it in-school suspension?
Totally different. That's why I'm cautioning against using those terms. A suspension is at home, not getting your work. In-school suspension would be on campus, doing your work at school, and not at the alternative school. So I think if you just articulate a placement option, then I can help you with the language.
Well, I would suggest maybe November fifteenth, if you're looking for a day certain.
Seventeenth is a Monday. I'd still like to know, if we can get an answer to how many days has she served to this point?
Past forty-five.
Yeah, but how much?
We know we've passed forty-five. We have been on August twenty.
I have a suggestion. Could we kind of keep her where she is until she catches up the work that she hasn't completed from the beginning? And then, once that's over, return to school. So she's doing really well now, but she has not completed all of her work.
She already caught up.
Oh, she's caught up. That's a good thing. Okay.
She already caught up. She just was, when she was behind, they told her, oh, well, you fell behind, so you got to serve over.
Oh, okay. So she's caught up. Good. Okay, so.
I have a question about grades. So you're saying that she's caught up? And like, just hear me out. So like, you can be caught up and it's not done right or well, but you could be caught up and you could be doing okay. So can you give me an idea if we are in a, we're not doing well? We're like, are we a C D? Are we a D F? Are we like a C? Are we like A B? Like, can you just give me an idea of where we are in that? You're the parent. If you don't mind me asking.
Yes, no, of course. I asked what was the principal. When this incident occurred, she was doing great in the beginning. She fell behind for three or four days. That curriculum is accumulative. You got to do twenty-something assignments a day. Four days, she went through depression and just quit doing everything. She gave up. I had to hire a counselor. The principal did not let me know that till the term was almost over, because she was so far ahead. They only make phone calls at the end of their month or something like that. So she was ahead. They didn't need to make a phone call. So she kind of got looked behind. By the time they realized she was behind, the term was almost already done. So she fell behind on that term. She is automatically already caught back up on everything, and her grades were B days. And that came from her principal, because I just had a two-hour conversation with her in her office. Three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Thank you. Still asking my question.
Sir, please, if you know that.
Her last day was August twenty-sixth. That was the last day she was at six- door. That's when the incident occurred on the bus.
Okay, who's the math person?
So we have to run it on my phone.
We're around sixty-five days right now.
Right. Now, I guess the point was, Mr. Henry was going to stipulate to a sixty-day time, and we're past that point, is really what I was getting at. And that's where my timeline questions were. Mr. Hori, I didn't mean to be or make you think presumptuously that we were trying to nitpick something.
Why don't we uphold the superintendent's recommendation, but allow her to go back to school and not do the whole ninety days? Because she fell back, she's still being on probation.
Yeah. I think the probation is important. Because when it comes down to it, still feeling comfortable that there was a physical altercation. So I'm sorry, I can't let go of that. So I do still, I'm staying firm on a probationary period.
I think I videoed.
The video, I can't. I'm sorry.
No, I agree with you. I think because of the video, I have, I think there needs to be a probation, but I'd like to get her back to school. I guess I just don't like the word expulsion. I'd rather the word suspension, time served. Let her go back to school and put on probation for the rest of the year. No, it can't go beyond, it can only go ninety, till the ninety days are hit.
That was easily on even what she was originally.
And then she would remain on probation for the remainder of the ninety days.
The ninety days, correct.
So let's get some detail, which you need, and what we're talking about.
I think that what she just said and what Mr. Henry just said, again, this isn't my motion. I think I understand what Mr. Henry is motioning now, which is to uphold the expulsion and allow students to return to school immediately.
And then she has to remain on probation for the remainder.
As she would, because that's upholding the expulsion.
But are you saying expulsion or suspension?
I would like to say suspension instead of expulsion.
So can I make a statement here?
Go ahead.
I think at this point, one thing that we do agree is that child needs to go back to school.
Yes.
I do think that she needs to go back to school. I would like to see her back at school as early as Monday, if possible. So that's what I would like to happen, if possible. At this point, I feel like the verbiage of expulsion or suspended, it doesn't matter. What the child needs is to go back to school.
She's still on probation.
Right. I do feel that the probation is necessary.
Thirty more days. Okay, I can live with that.
Perfect. So it sounds like the motion, so I will second the motion and restate it. We will uphold the expulsion, allow the student to return back to school immediately or upon the next immediate number of days that she feels comfortable to do that. Again, on her judgment, but she could return as early as tomorrow. And upholding the expulsion would also include the remainder of the probationary period. So move and...
Can I just make a comment? So what you're going to do is you're still going to keep her out of extracurriculars because of the expulsion. So that's unfortunate. I know that wasn't the intent by some. So I would like to see her, if she's going back to school, fully back at school. So that, that's what the expulsion might would be.
If I may, just because of what I saw, the severity of the video, I think there needs to be a probationary period.
There will be a probation.
And I think, unfortunately, that means she can't participate for another month or so in extracurricular. But after that, she can. I think, but we're getting her back into school. That's the most important thing.
Yes, sir. She's about to go to public comment.
I can go, this is a part, I have never been okay with what she did. You have been known that from me as well. So I agree with both of you. What she did was wrong, no doubt in my mind. But expulsion was way extreme for a little girl that's never been in trouble in her life. Suspension would have been perfectly fine with me, and I would have never said anything, because I always believe in accountability, which is why I'm still pushing this issue, accountability. She was wrong, but the school was also wrong by putting her in that place with that little boy at the time. My mind, it goes both ways. She has accountability. Thank you.
We have a motion. Dr. Giott is seconded by Mr. Henry. We're on any board. Just any public comment? Any board questions or comment, Mr. DePlantis?
It was stated that she could return as early as tomorrow. Who's going to notify the school if she decides to show up tomorrow? And not cause of conflict? Just want to make sure of that, okay? Just want to make sure that, you know, she shows up at school and disrupts the whole, her day again. She could be ready tomorrow?
I mean, we can have a ready. There was in the verbiage on the papers I received that we were supposed to have a meeting with Mr. Corio to discuss plans on getting her back and getting her in place. So I mean, honestly, that would definitely...
Y'all decide when you, best time for her to go back. All right, any board, any other board discussion, any questions? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to, to... Negative date, eight, number eight. Negative dates for future meetings. A committee meetings, Policy and Academics Committee, Business Committee, and Land and Facility Management Committee, Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and regular school board meeting on Wednesday, December third, twenty-twenty-five. Number nine, executive session. To consider entering into executive session to receive an update from Board Attorney, Mr. Patrick Amadi regarding potential pending litigation, L.B. versus L.E.S.B.